Like to call the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four City Council Regular Meeting Order.
Microphone?
It's on, it's on.
Okay, you're really quiet.
Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Harry?
Present.
Chilson?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
Nelson?
He is requesting an excused absence for this meeting.
Parker?
Present.
Whackler?
Present.
Cassidy?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Well, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Ms. Garrett, may I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would move to add lay down action memorandum twenty twenty four zero zero six, request for an excused absence for the February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four Regular City Council Meeting to the Agenda and Consent Agenda as new business under item eight C two.
Thank you. Are there any objections to adding action memorandum twenty twenty four dash zero zero six to the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing none, action memorandum twenty twenty four dash zero zero six is part of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
February fourteenth, twenty twenty four Council Meeting Minutes, ordinance twenty twenty four zero zero six, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by ten thousand dollars in the general fund for a donation received from Debbie McCarthy, sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on March twenty seventh. Ordinance twenty twenty four zero zero seven, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by twenty four thousand nine hundred forty eight dollars in the general fund for the purchase of a replacement motor, sponsored by the city manager, public hearing on March twenty seventh. Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero zero six, supporting the implementation of an I-voted sticker design contest for the twenty twenty four Regular Municipal Elections, sponsored by Mr. Chilson. Action memorandum twenty twenty four zero zero five, awarding an FY twenty four cycle two mini grant, sponsored by the mayor. Action memorandum twenty twenty four zero zero six, which was just laid down, request for an excused absence from the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four Regular City Council Meeting, sponsored by Mr. Nelson. That is your consent agenda.
Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item just read by the clerk? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Hearing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Moving on to the next agenda item. Would be public comments and presentations, item others than those appearing on the agenda. Those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker, twenty minutes aggregate. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Ma'am, please just step forward and state your name and address for the record. And before you get started, my ears are in for repairs. So this is why I'm using headphones, so it's really need to speak into the microphones. I think you need to turn it on.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, great.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Miller. I'm here on behalf of Kenai Peninsula Hockey Association and its members. We are the local, the largest local youth hockey organization for the peninsula. And we utilize the Saldana Regional Sports Complex, complex pretty much every day throughout the winter months, and we desire to use it during the summer as well. Myself and another board member started speaking with Mr. Todd, the Parks and Rec Director, last fall about wanting ice in the summer. And we were recently informed that he does not plan to put in ice. From, he's going to remove the ice April eighth and not put it back until August sixth. And we have this beautiful facility. We have people who want to use it. It's a community building and ice rink. We're willing to pay for the ice. And we just would like your consideration or reconsideration, whatever needs to be done to open the ice rink, even if it's just for one full month before that, like if we could have it for the full month of July. The issue is, is that our kids are required to try out for their competitive hockey teams the first week of August. And if they don't have ice throughout the summer, they're not prepared for those tryouts. Throughout the summer, then, many families travel to Anchorage or to the Valley or even out of state to attend hockey camps just to get their kids on the ice. They pay a lot of money to do that. We could be doing that for them here. And in fact, if it was in July, we could be enticing people from Anchorage and the Valley to come down here for hockey camps. We have several just ready to sign on the dotted line and they say they will come down and hold hockey camps. So, you know, like I said, KPHA is willing to buy the ice. We're not asking you to give it to us for free. We just need you to put it in and have the building open. Mr. Todd, you know, his reasoning, I believe what he's told me is he doesn't have the staff in the summer. But that can be fixed, and that's why we're here in February. Like, there is plenty of time to figure that problem out. Whether it's finding somebody to contract for the month of July to run the rink, if it's, you know, paying more for a rink staff for that month. Whatever needs to be done, I truly believe with collaboration, it can happen. And if that's literally the only reason why is he doesn't have a staff member to be in the building during July, like, I just don't think that's an insurmountable problem. So I respectfully ask that possibly on the next Parks and Rec meeting, which I think is in just a week, March sixth or seventh, that this is on their agenda to start brainstorming how to get the rink open during the full summer or at least during the month of July. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much. Sir? And you please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me the time. My name's Ted Barton, three seven one zero zero, Cannery Road, Kenai, nine nine six one one. I'm here on behalf of KPHA as well. I'm the president of KPHA, have been so for, wow, as long as I can remember, have been involved with the Hockey Association for close to three decades now. And I just want to echo what Mrs. Miller just said about the importance of having ice availability down here. It used to be that the Kenai Rink was open during the summer months and it wasn't an issue until the, the, the structure of the Kenai Ice Rink is not capable of, of, of having summer ice because of, there's precipitation and it was affecting the roof. And so that's why they've gotten rid of their, they can't have summer ice. It's going to deteriorate the building faster than it was meant to be. So I, I can echo the, the demand for summer ice to get these, these young athletes ready for their tryouts. So, you know, basically we're asking any, anything that, that we can do to get a few more weeks of ice at least in the summertime. We're willing to work with you. We'll, I mean, we're, it's not going to cost the city of Saldana anything. We, I mean, we, we will pay for the ice. We will be willing to work with you. However, however it can be done to make this happen, but it, it is a pretty big deal for the local hockey community, you know, keeps kids off their screens a lot. We can all appreciate that. So anyway, I'm, I'm here to echo what Tammy Miller has. She's had, she's had at least five kids throughout the years in the Hockey Association. I've had two. And, you know, many of our players have gone on to play high level hockey, high school, college, and, you know, it's, it's a good thing that we need to support and it would benefit our folks to not have to go to Anchorage for this, which they often do if nothing is available here. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Chilson?
Just a quick question. Both of you have now mentioned the offer to pay for the ice and I don't really support. If we were going to make ice available, I don't think it would be responsible to transfer all of that cost to the community. But I don't know if you had any talks with, with Director Todd about the cost of that because it's quite high. It's about twenty four thousand dollars a month from what I was told to run that in the summer.
We pay. I don't, I am not the treasure, I am not the treasurer for the association, but I know we pay well over twenty thousand dollars a month in ice right now.
Okay.
So again, even if the city subsidizes some of it, like we can definitely pay a large, a good portion of the ice, like we, we anticipate paying for whatever we need to use, you know, whatever that price is, if it's the same price now or whatever. But we, we just need the ice put in. You know, is what our, and, and so that's where we're at. And I did neglect to say, we do have a petition out there. It's got over five hundred signatures. If any of you are interested, I'm happy to forward it to you.
Okay, thank you for, for coming.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes.
I'm Will Miller, three nine eight four six, Bubba's Avenue. I've played, I'm here to speak about keeping ice in the sports center. I have played hockey for seven years now. I broke my leg in a hockey game six weeks ago. And I missed a lot of my hockey season recovering. A few days ago, I was allowed to stop using my crutches and start walking with a cane. But I'm still healing and I won't be able to skate again for the rest of the season. Every summer, I have trained for hockey at the coming season and found ways to improve so I can keep playing at a high competitive level. Every summer, this effort involves me traveling out of our community in our state to attend sports camps and clinics and facilities that keep their ice in all year round. A facility with year-round ice has been something I wish we had in our community for many years. But this summer, having a facility with ice is no longer a wish, it's a need. It will be especially important for me to be able to skate throughout the summer in order to get my strength and agility back from this injury so I can make a team when trads are held during the first week of August. Ice time is going to be a big part of being able to recover for me. And that means I need the sports center to keep its ice this summer. I know I'm not alone and hoping the city will approve the decision to keep ice in the sports center.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the council? Mr. Chilson?
I'd just like to say thank you for coming out tonight and, and speaking to this. I, I always love it when I see our kids in the community coming out and, and speaking to government issues at a local level because, like you said, it has such an effect on our lives. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? And sir, step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. My name's Greg Springer. Address is two eight six Sunrise Court here in Saldana. I'm a ten U hockey coach for the KPHA, Kenai Peninsula Hockey Association. And I am also here to echo what these other folks have said about trying to keep ice year-round. It's extremely difficult, especially in ice hockey, to be competitive with all the other teams in the state when they have year-round ice and access to this. It's not like other sports where you can just take four or five months off and hop back on your feet and immediately try out for a team. And a lot of those tryouts really dictate where these kids end up in the sport. And so it's, I think it's unfair and tricky to ask them, you know, to skate two or three times and then hop on the ice and try out for a team. It's, it's a massively growing sport. There's three hundred plus kids right now. We have twenty teams of kids ages three to eighteen. You know, when you think of Alaska, you think of hockey, you know, no one thinks of baseball. We have it. It's not soccer, it's not tennis. It's, it's hockey. And so I, as a person that lives here, I'm absolutely surprised we don't have year-round ice as popular as our sport is, and it would only grow more and we would draw more people to this area from all the other areas that have hockey. But it's definitely something that we need. Sending our kids away for summer camps just doesn't make sense when we could have that ice here. So I just urge you to consider. And like we said, we're, we're willing to pay for it. Hockey's not a cheap sport. And the parents and the, and the people that participate in that sport know that we're just asking for the ice. If we can get the ice there, we'll pay for it. We're not looking for a handout. We're just looking for an opportunity. Anywhere else you can put a basketball on concrete, can hit a baseball in a field, but without ice, we can't play hockey. And so that's, that's all we're asking, the facilities there. And, and if we can do that and get some year-round ice, we'll see even more benefit to the community besides just kids getting better at hockey. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. As you're aware, we awarded a contract in October for construction of the field house. And that contractor will be coming, has already started work and will be on site later this spring to, to begin work. And that's going to disrupt activities at the Saldana Sports Center. But after that field house is constructed, we'll provide the opportunity so that we can have year-round ice at the, at the sports center. Because we'll have the field house to take over doing a lot of the activities that are done in the sports center right now, like the home show, like the sports show, like four H, which are using the facility from April through the end of July. And it's created a conflict. We are supportive of keeping the sports center open on a year-round basis. But right now, we have, we do have conflicts and we will work. Once that field house is done, it will, it will be easier. But right now, it's working through and working together to make those adjustments and be flexible so that the folks who've reserved the facility can go forward. Then we can put the ice back in, take the ice back out. So I think you will find there is support. We wouldn't have gone forward with the fifteen million general obligation bond for the field house and awarded that contract if we didn't support having sports in our community for our kids and the surrounding area. So twenty twenty five, fall of twenty twenty five through twenty six, things will definitely look up. But that's a year and a half away. So we just have to have that flexibility and figure that, find ways to work together. And I do appreciate everybody coming out and providing the testimony and, and know that we're here, but we might not be able to do exactly what you want in the timeframe that you need.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And yeah, we look forward to, to the completion of that and the potential of year-round ice. And I guess we then ask, is, in, in the interim, you know, any, sooner we can get back on the ice is, is a benefit to us, even if it's a few weeks, getting four or five practices in before these kids try out can be a massive influence to their season. So we, we appreciate you and we know you're here for us as well. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Whackler?
I know we approved opening it a little bit early last year. When did it open for this season? We put ice on a little bit earlier than we had in the past.
Go ahead.
I don't have the exact date in front of me. In fact, the hockey folks probably knew.
It was the very last week of July, like maybe three days left in July, something like that. It was very late.
I believe it was the end of July and possibly three days earlier.
Okay. And we've spoken to, do we have events all the way up to scheduled through that now?
We do have events, Mr. Mayor, if I can expand.
Go ahead.
Okay. We do have events that are scheduled. And another hurdle that we're coming up against is that we are having trouble with the ice and the freon and that it's not made anymore. There's, I, looking at what I've been told. We do have the engineering firm coming on March twenty first to look at the refrigeration system and to give us a cost analysis. So part of the problem isn't, definitely as Vice Mayor stated, we, full support. And then when we open the field house, moving forward to put ice in earlier, but we are actually having trouble with the system right now. And so running at the additional time right now has really big concerns for us because, quite frankly, it could fail and we don't want that. So we're having the engineer coming in to give us a report and to tell us next steps. And that would be, you know, some of it is the next steps for the ice to preserve it for the regular season. But we're, we've heard you. We're working towards it to make it happen.
Thank you for answering that. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much. Anyone else in the council chambers wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, let's take a look at Zoom. And for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see one hand raised. Well, let's go to the Zoom first. That would be Keegan Keel.
Hello, yes, my name's Keegan Keel. I live on four oh four Lawton Drive, Kenai. Also a board member in the KPHA board, as well as a U twelve double A hockey coach. I'll just echo what everybody else has said and, and kind of maybe reflect for a second on when I, when I was a kid and the passion that I had for the sport of hockey. And then fast forwarding to now with, with my three children that play. And just the amount of money and time, energy, miles driven to, to allow them to do the thing that they love most, and that's play hockey. And in the summer months, unfortunately, that's been in, in the months of May, June, July, and even a little bit of August, reflecting on the last two years. And, and when I was a kid, hockey, hockey was made available at the slot in the sports center, even going back before the Kenai Rink. And then, and then kind of just went away as the, as the Kenai Rink began to hold ice in the summer. And I'll just echo everybody else by saying we'd like you to, to reconsider that so that we can keep kids off their screens, as Doc said, and as well as keep kids off the streets. And I think, I think this is something that could bring in a lot of revenue from bringing people up from, or down from the whole state, as well as bringing people up from the lower forty eight. Last year, as we were traveling to different hockey schools across the country, I spoke to pretty much every, every entity that my kids were on the ice with and, and they all, they all thought, they all, they all reflected on how cool it would be to be able to come to a place like Saldana, Alaska fish on the Kenai River and, and coach hockey schools as, as we used to do in the early two thousands. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to us and, and looking into this and look forward to more conversation about it.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, oh, thank you, Mr. Keel. Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Leslie Ross. I live at three eight two seven six Hall Road, Sterling. I obviously agree with everything everybody's saying, that's why I'm here. But I kind of wanted to mention this because it's something that really bothered me. I go to the sports center a lot in the summer, so I'm like there walking. I walk from the sports center. So I see the sports center, they're empty, and it's supposed to be for ice. That's why it's there. It's a, it's a hockey rink, right? And they had like racquetball courts or whatever the, they set pickleball. They set up pickleball all summer. And every time I went in there to use the building real quick, it was black and nobody's in there using it. Nobody's using pickleball, so why is pickleball set up? If the ice was in there, we would be using it every day. I mean, they could have open skates still all summer. They could have hockey camps. And then when we finally did get ice a little early, we had to cover up the ice because four H came in with their cattle and their animals. And they covered the ice for, I think, a week. And so we stopped using the ice for that week. And then the ice was ruined because there was feces and pee that had gone under the tarp and gone onto the ice. And so that's something that has bothered me in the last two years because I've noticed that they've done it indoors in the last two years. And that should be something that is outside, their animals. And we should still be in there using that ice that's on and covered up. And I just wanted to bring that also to your attention, that those are the three main things that you guys use the sports center for. And the summer is the home show, the sports show, and the four H. Well, one of those shouldn't even be inside of a building. It should still be used as ice for the kids.
Any questions or comments from the council? As far as the four H goes, I know that issue is being addressed by the administration. and I don't expect that will happen again this year.
Okay, thank you.
Next person. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sarah Miller, 39846 Bubba's Avenue. Not related to Tammy Miller, but I am Will Miller's mom. So I just wanted to respond to some of the conversation that I heard brought up, some of the points, potentially difficult issues around having extra ice time in the summer. First, the cost of maintaining that ice and operating the facility. Potential of a system failure, as Ms. Bauer mentioned. The staffing issue that was brought up to Tammy. The disruption due to the construction of the new field house and scheduling, things that have already been scheduled to occur inside the sports center this summer. I feel like all of these are solvable problems if we start thinking about them now. If we also consider just the addition of one additional month of ice for the month of July. I know that as a parent, committed to having my son play hockey, I'm committed to paying that money either way, whether it's here in our community with more, maybe more expensive ice, if that's what it requires to keep that extra month open. Or if I pay to go travel out of, out of our community and stay somewhere in the summer and pay for him to go to a camp. And then I'm spending that money either way, but I'd really rather do it here. So anyway, just to reiterate that I think these problems can be solved if we just start thinking about them now. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Chilson.
This might be directed towards administration, but when do we currently pull the ice out in the spring?
April.
April 8th is what I was told by Mr. Todd.
Got it, thank you.
It's April every year.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here in the council chambers wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? And please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Felicia Welch. My address is 34669 Commerce Street. And I just wanted to add on to what everybody else is saying about KPHA. And we spend a lot to send our son out of state every summer. Three to 5,000 per school that we send him to, plus airfare, plus hotels, plus food and everything else. That's how committed we are. We would much rather spend that money here locally. We don't want it, that money to go out. But if the ice isn't here, we can't be here. So we travel and travel a lot. That's about it. I just wanted you guys to know the severity of, we would like to spend that, a lot of that money here and not send our kids out. So, thank you.
Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Taking a look at Zoom again, I do not see any hands raised. Just a couple of quick comments. My son played with KPHA and he played until he was into his 40s and it's a great sport. And I think we all understand what you'd like to do and as being a hockey parent, I understand that the ice time is valuable. There is a number of things going on out there at the sports center right now that are going to create some issues and that being able to put ice in all the time. But I would ask the administration that if we do put it on the agenda for the Parks and Rec and they can discuss it further and, and see if there's any better solution. And when is that next meeting, do you know?
March 7th.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda is Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives of the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? And I see Mayor Mitricki here and I was wondering if he wanted to speak on anything from the Assembly? Okay, we'll move on to. I see no one else from the Assembly here or Legislative. And I see none on Zoom, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Administrative reports, Whistle Hill Special Assessment District Update and Options Memo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before Director Zarneski speaks to this, who did a great job of writing the memo with all of the history and options, I do just want to reiterate that we are looking for direction this evening. If, if you come to a point of providing the direction, we would like to have the direction and bring it back to you at the next meeting or a meeting that you direct. So with that, Director Zarneski could speak to it.
Okay, thank you. And as City Manager Bauer has indicated, we are looking for, for direction tonight at the Whistle Hill Special Assessment District. That was authorized in the fall of 2022. Because the staff report is lengthy, I will try to summarize things and make, make this just the basics and then open it up to questions. And I'll also point out that, that the original petitioners of the SAD are here and I'm sure would appreciate an opportunity to comment as well. This process originally began in 2021 when the council directed city administration to create a development agreement to facilitate the extension of sewer up the hill from the map store to the Whistle Hill Development. And the council direction at that time was that the agreement that should be drafted would provide a 25% cost share not to exceed $100,000. The Curls instead decided to petition for the SAD that went before you a year and a half ago. And is still before you. So when you authorized the SAD for the Whistle Hill Sewer Improvements, it did call for extending the sewer line about a quarter of a mile. The approved resolution and the following ordinance authorized the city's share of the SAD to be 508,000 or roughly 62.5% of the estimated cost. And that total estimated project cost at that time was just over $800,000. So we, at that point, we went out to bid. We received a single response and it came over our cost estimate by more than 43%. When, when that occurs, when it's greater than 10%, our code requires that we get further council approval. We informed the SAD sponsors, the Curls, of the results and the code requirements. They requested additional time to explore other potential options and they found no other effective way or cost effective way to provide sewer services to their development. At that point, we met internally. We also met with the Curls. We shared with them what we viewed are the potential options that you may consider moving forward. Before though, I, I share with you those options, which again are outlined in the memo. I do want to share with you that there were some modifications, some changes to the SAD, SAD that occurred since its approval. So first is that a number of parcels were subdivided or combined. So originally when the SAD was approved, it had six parcels. Now it has seven. Also, the boundary of the SAD has slightly changed. It is, has grown in size because of those lot combinations. The parcel subdivision and the combinations have also resulted in changes to their assessed value. At this point, we don't know what those assessed values are as the borough hasn't placed a, a, an assessed value on them at this time. The prime rate has increased from 4.75% to 8.5% today. Also, a new SAD policy was adopted in 2023. And when this SAD was first approved, it was approved under the policy that was originally approved in 2013. That policy allowed you to, to fund programs between 50 and 75% of the total cost. The SAD policy, the policy that you adopted last summer gives you the ability to fund SADs from 0 to 50%. So getting back to those options that we shared with the Crowl and that we, Crowls and that we shared also with you in the memo. They're not exhaustive. There may be other options out there that you may want to think about or consider that could be available. What we tried to do for each of those options is to outline all of the specific steps that would be necessary to implement them. So you should see at the end of each option, some concise steps and, and things that you would need to do if one, one of those is favored. So the, the first option that we shared was to increase the funding for the SAD so that the project may be constructed, but at the obviously higher cost. This option recognizes those increased costs and it provides the, the additional funding to complete the project. The memo goes into more detail with regard to some of the hurdles that would have to be passed in order to make that happen. There are some logistics, as, as I mentioned earlier, the change in boundaries, the change in assessed values and such that will make that a, a difficult, a difficult option to implement. The second option is for you by motion to direct administration to create, or to, for, for you by motion to create a revised Special Assessment District. This option too recognizes that changes have occurred in the area. It provides, this option provides a mechanism to address those changes, whereas the first one does not. And since this would be a new SAD, it would be governed under the new 2023 SAD policy that, that I had just mentioned. The third option is to direct administration to create a development agreement for the utility improvements. This is the same tool that was originally considered for this project in 2021. And like the revised SAD option, it would require the council to determine the appropriate level of funding. And the fourth and final option that we presented was to decline to proceed with the Whistle Hill Sewer Project in any form. This action would remove the city from being financially tied to this project. And as you see from a six page memo and all the people that contributed to it, this is a complicated issue. It's, it's very messy. We recognize that and we defaulted to endorsing the idea of a development agreement solution. And, and, and we recommend that at a, at a cost share that is consistent with your most recent action that authorized no more than $508,000. There's some key points about the development agreement that we do find positive for both the city and for the developer. So one, it, the development agreement is the most appropriate tool in our toolbox that we have to deal with this type of project and the benefits that it provides to the properties, to the city and to the other landowners. The project's scope will not change one bit from what you approved in the SAD. It, it remains the same project. The sewer main was dubbed outs to the parcels. No new encumbrances of, of funds would be required. Additionally, any cost increases or overruns would be borne by the developer, not the city. The burden of project design, bidding, permitting and construction are on the developer, not on the city. Upon inspection and approval, the sewer main line becomes part of the city's utility infrastructure. A no, and new ratepayers are added. And last, the concept of a development agreement does relieve the city from administering an SAD for a 10-year period. So again, your direction in the form of a motion is appreciated. And all, all the folks here with administration are, except perhaps the library staff, are willing to answer questions on, on this topic.
Would the city manager like to add anything additional to that or Mr. Cornelos?
Actually, I, I believe the director explained it. I'd be interested in your questions and then maybe then expand from there.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Chilson.
Staff is currently recommending the development agreement pathway forward. If, if we went with that path, capping the money that we would be providing to fund this at the previously set levels, there's no additional appropriation needed. So if we made a motion just to move forward on that tonight, is that the end of it? And you have everything you need from the council to make this happen? Or would there be follow-up legislation required in the form of ordinances or resolutions in subsequent meetings?
Go ahead.
Thank you for that question. So the steps would be that, the code requires us to bring back a resolution when the project is, increases above 10%. And as was explained, we haven't brought that back because at this time, even though it came over the 10%, to allow the Curls additional time for their research. We, we still need to bring that back to you, no matter what. We need to bring that back to you. And should option three be chosen, then we'll bring the resolution back. It's odd, but we're going to request that you fail the resolution. We have to write it in affirmative, but to fail the resolution, basically stopping the existing SAD. So then we would also have additional legislation approving the development agreement. And option three, basically.
Got it, thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Development agreements, have we done development agreements with other entities? And what are the parameters of development agreements? If we've done them with others, what are those parameters been in the past?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Director Cornelos to speak to this one.
Coming through. Sound clear? Excellent. We have done a limited number of development agreements. They seem to be, we've had a, just a few since I've been at the city. Perhaps with the development in our community, they're more and more frequent. Walgreens is probably the most prolific example at the Y in Saldana here, between the highways. That was a development agreement with a developer from down south. Its parameters were 25% of the construction cost of 47th Street, not to exceed 100,000. We've also had smaller development agreements with rural cap for the construction of a gravel road down East Readout that didn't have city contribution. We've had minuscule development agreements for three sticks of sewer pipe that, that went in on an existing road. So not a lot of data to, to, in history, but it is the instrument of choice for, you know, setting the parameters between a developer or an entity and, and the city, setting the scope, schedule and budget for accomplishing some work within the, within the city.
Mr. Zarneski.
Thank you. And, and I just wanted to add to that, that the, development agreements in general, I believe are going to continue to be an important tool that is available to us, especially with the passage of the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan, which calls for city participation in, in many levels. And so just the, the concept of being able to work with developers and provide incentives and catalysts for future development is an important piece that is in, in again, in our, our toolbox. And I don't know if you wanted to touch on it, but we do have potentially two additional development agreements and currently that may be in the works.
Yeah, I won't talk in specifics because they're, you know, they're still kicking around some ideas, but some, there's some folks interested in development agreement for a small water line extension and minor road improvements. We have the possibility of a planned unit development for residential affordable housing that, that could include infrastructure improvements to, to the right of way. But we, you know, we often get folks that are interested in, in collaborating with the city that, that don't come to fruition. But John's right, we do seem to be seeing, you know, development growth in the city. And it's, it's likely that we'll continue to at least look towards these development agreements, which are. agreements, which are, you know, unique to the needs of that particular project, which is why, as the city manager noted, we would bring back a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into that particular development agreement that spells out the relationship between the city and the entity. So, and, and it could be specifics about improvements, you know, two 12-foot lanes and eight-inch pipe, but also setting forth, you know, any conditions associated with, with the project, insurance and risk management, things of that nature. So, so we reasonably would expect, I guess, to use this type of agreement for the proposed type of improvement for Whistle Hill and others.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Chulson?
Just a quick clarification, the 25% cost share you referenced with the Walgreens development agreement, was that 25% for the city or 25% for Walgreens?
We use Walgreens because that's the tenant that built on the private property, private parcel in there, but Aventine was the name of the developer who approached the city about a replat that, that dedicated right of way. Mullen, which is the entry road, Homestead and 47th Street and the associated infrastructure within those 60-foot right of ways. So water and sewer and storm drain, pavement, urban gutter, sidewalk, things of that nature. The development agreement between the city and Aventine was that the city would contribute 25% of the cost of construction for 47th Street only, not to exceed 100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Saying none? If there's no council of...
I, I, I do know that the administration has asked for, for direction from the, from the council. And of the four options that are outlined, I prefer the option three, going with a development agreement. There was previously negotiated with the property owners, a development agreement that could get that dusted off. But based on what is in the recommendation here, I would recommend that we do a development agreement with Whistle Hill and that the city participate up to 25%, not to exceed $100,000. We have set precedent in the past that this is where, how we have entered into development agreements in the past. We have development agreements potentially coming forward. If we do something too excessive, it is going to set a precedent and we will have, and I've had folks come to me already saying, if you're going to do this, then we're going to be lining up to come to the city and having you build something for us as well. So that's why I would recommend...
Are you making this a motion?
I am, I'm making, I can make it a motion. So I would move that we proceed with option three, development agreement for Whistle Hill improvements and that the city has a 25% cost share capped at $100,000.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm on the fence about the amount on that, but I'm going to second for discussion and we can work through those details.
Thank you. Continue on, Vice Mayor Parker.
I, I think I've made enough comments, but I, I have the motion and I would urge council members to take into consideration, as we are growing, continue to grow, we have the petition before the Supreme Court on annexation and there are other areas that may come into the city and people may approach the city about doing development agreements. And if we set something too excessive, we're going to run the city out of money and that's not my objective.
Any other comments? Mr. Chulson?
I agree with most of the points that Vice Mayor Parker has made. I, I absolutely do support anything that we can do as a city to take care of our local businesses. You know, they're a huge component of our local economy and I think we need to do what we can to support their developments. But again, Vice Mayor Parker is right that we, we do have an obligation to look at after the financial health of the city and especially when we have additional development projects that are potentially happening. In addition to that, we just had our, our outflow collapse and there's a pretty significant cost that goes with the repair of that and that's a pretty significant new development since we approved the previous SAD. So I think that we do need to be financially prudent on how we handle this. I'm just, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with the $100,000 amount or if maybe we should figure out some way to fit, to, to meet them in the middle and, and, and not leave them completely holding the bag on their own, since there has been a lot of effort on their end to develop this area up there. And, and there's been the, a lot of work made on their end with the, with the commitment that we had previously made to support them up to that level. Again, I'm just on the fence about where we, where we go between that and maybe the $100,000 amount, maybe finding a compromise in there. I, I guess one of my questions would be to administration, whatever number we settle on for this, would that be an expenditure that we, we wholly bear out of the utility fund or would we be borrowing on that and making payments on that? How, how are we going to finance that?
It would come out of the utility fund. Since it's utility related, it would come out of that fund.
But do we, do we pay the full cost out of that fund upfront or do we take out a little interest loan, maybe through the state and then make payments on that out of the fund? I guess is my question.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So it would come, as I stated, directly out of the fund. In the development agreement, we could, would contain language that it would be paid to the Crowells, the owners of Whistle Hill at the completion of the project and inspection and accepting the project, the city's accepting the project. Depending on the dollar amount, it is in the fund. So for instance, 508,000 has been appropriated because when the council approved the SAD, that amount became appropriated. So there is not additional appropriated. And as you stated, we do have other utility needs, but we do have that 508 set aside for the project.
And the other thing I would, I would add to this is, you know, we, we always have to keep in mind that it's, it's our local ratepayers that, that put money into that fund. And when we deplete it, when we get to a pinch of that, it's going to be the residents of Saldana that have to pick up that tab and fund this. And as much as we should be supporting our local businesses and the development of, of infrastructure for them, it's, you know, a significant chunk of that cost is paid by, you know, not businesses, but residents that are, that are using this. So I, it's, it's tough because I really want to find some way that we can be in the middle, but I, I do also have concerns about the precedent that sets to Vice Mayor Parker's point. If, if we exceed that 25% cap, how many people are we going to have lining up out the door wanting to do this as well with every subsequent SAD or development agreement that we have coming forward? So I, I would really be curious to hear thoughts from other council members on this.
Any other council comments? Ms. Waxler? Microphone.
I'll let Linda go first.
My question is, we are currently looking at, what is it, 3 million for our outflow?
Thank you, Councilwoman Hutchings, through the mayor. The outflow project is, is a 714, one, it's a, it's about 850, 900,000 for the outflow repair. The biosolids dewatering is, is about three to four million, different project.
So my total would be?
Well, we, we don't have a final cost in the biosolids dewatering, so I'm going to fudge there. We don't have, we don't have a final cost. We're, we're seeking...
So you're anticipating, what, 2 million or 3 million?
No, biosolids will be, will be between three and four. We're, we're obtaining our second SRF.
Okay. And we have how much in our budget right now?
Four.
No, no, I'm sorry, that we have in our fund?
I don't have that number offhand right now.
Go ahead.
Approximately 2 million, 2.1 million in the utility fund.
So we're going to be 2 million in the hole before we ever get going? Is that correct? Okay. So then in that case, since we do have to think about the rest of the residents of the city of Saldana, I would go with the 25% not to exceed 100,000.
Ms. Waxler?
Yeah, I wasn't here when this was originally approved, so I'm kind of coming in the back end trying to figure out exactly what's going on. But I also remember that we do also have a business that just opened locally that is pressing hard for us to reduce the expansion charges. And I know that expansion charges and continuing the capacity of the system, eventually we are going to have to expand. And I know that fend, if we choose to take away the large expansion fee for people hooking up, as Mr. Chulson said, it will have to come from somewhere, which means that that will again be separated out against the residents and people that one have paid that expansion fee already, but it will just be a rate increase. So to me, that's the only way that you could recoup that. So all these things I'm looking at as rate increases potentially. If anybody sees anything different, let me know.
Any further comments? Mr. Carey?
Mr. Mayor, will there be an opportunity for our members of the public to comment on the motion for us?
I'm going to wait and see right now. I'm going to ask the city clerk if we need to have an open public hearing on it.
Well, this is a little bit of an odd one because we have a motion and it's on the floor and you've already had discussion. I would, I would leave that to the mayor's discretion, whether or not to hold public testimony or hearing on this. I do know that if it comes back in front of you in, in March, it will be under the public hearing section of our agenda, so they would be able to speak to it then, for sure. This one's a little bit of a sticky wicket.
It's a very good pass the buck. Yes, I will entertain as long as there's no objection from the council, some public testimony.
I'm fine with that.
Everyone's good with that, then, then I will open it up right now for a public discussion. Mrs. Crowell, would you like to speak on this?
This has changed things a little bit from what I intended to...
Am I on?
You are on.
Mary Crowell, 36156 Tremolo Circle. We have been collaborating with the city in addressing wastewater management on Whistle Hill since 2021. Our current septic system, designed in 2019, is undersized by 60% of our current needs and simply cannot accommodate future plan development. Our initial development agreement with the city became cost prohibitive at the time, so we pivoted to establishing the SAD in 2022. We were very grateful to the council for working with us to authorize a 62.5% city cost share, with the balance being assessed to benefiting parcels. In 2023, a single bid for the project far exceeded the engineering construction estimate and was unfortunately denied. We then decided to explore alternative wastewater systems, including a Renco and BioCycle. In addition, Johnson Engineering dug additional test holes in our newly acquired properties to determine the feasibility of adding another septic tank and a replacement leach field. With our poor soil conditions, none of these options were viable. We have done our due diligence and have concluded the only and best long-term solution is a city sewer extension. Whistle Hill continues to thrive and grow. Addy Camp, Brewett 602 and Frames and Things draw hundreds of visitors each summer. We remain open year-round to serve the peninsula. We employ roughly 50 people and we generate over 1 million in sales in Addy Camp alone. Fresh 365 has expanded into two new farm containers with one dedicated to growing a variety of gourmet mushrooms. Our solar farm generated a record of over 400 kilowatt hours this Sunday in February and will continue to, to expand to powering the entire development when completed at the end of the year. Construction begins this summer, converting our boxcar into lodging and renovating number 701 into a vintage boutique. We are also awaiting approval on a full liquor license in Addy Camp. We desperately need this sewer extension in order to continue to operate. It isn't a matter of if our current septic system fails, it's only a matter of when. Whistle Hill is innovated, sustainable and family-owned and operated. We have made a significant investment in our community and offer an eclectic collection of creative small businesses that are attractive, interesting and historical. We have created a destination, providing unique goods and services, and we have the first Tesla Superchargers in the state of Alaska. We are committed to a long and profitable relationship with the city and support future commercial growth along the Sterling Highway corridor. This development, development agreement will allow us to proceed immediately and save the city administrative costs and avoid an eventual septic system failure.
Any questions, comments from the council? Mr. Carey?
Just, I want to be sure, I understand what I just heard you say. Do I understand you to say that you would support the motion for us on a development agreement?
I do.
Thank you.
Let me clarify that, with the $100,000 limit in there or with the previous...
With the previous approved amount of 62.5%. That is the only way we can proceed.
Vice Mayor Parker?
So thank you for all that you have done at Whistle Hill. When the SAD was originally approved by the council, there were five property owners in addition to yourself? Is that right?
Or four.
And currently you guys own 80% of the properties within this proposed special assessment district?
That is correct.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this motion? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Tyler Johnson. I'm with Johnson Engineering and I live at 30475 Ark Loop Road. And Mary, thanks for inviting me, Mary, and thanks for listening. I, I guess I'll talk about the background. I was brought in last summer when the bid came in high enough to get everybody septic curious again about getting, you know, an onsite system there. So like she said, we dug holes all over the Whistle Hill property and all the acquired properties and test holes and we didn't find anything better. It was from bad to worse, silty, high water. Anybody around here that lives on a hill knows, you know, how bad the soils are. So we really didn't find anything that was suitable for an onsite system, especially for the type of facility there. Like a residential house, you know, it's, I've designed systems all the time for residences on, in poor soils because it's a lot of water and a little bit of organics. But when you have a restaurant, it's a lot of organics and a little bit of water. And all the leach field is, is an underground filter and the finer the filter, the faster it plugs. And so it, that's why they're septic, they're on their third septic since they opened and it's just not going to get any better, better form. So I think an onsite system, it, it, it obviously isn't going to work and it hasn't worked. And so we also looked at alternative systems, like she mentioned, BioCycle and a Renco. And basically what they are, you can imagine taking the Saldana Treatment Plant and shrinking it down into the size of a Conex box and then putting it on your property and then you can discharge it to Kinnah River, you know, there you probably don't want to, but, and that, and we looked into that, but that, in it, the one package that we looked at that was, I think it was $500,000 for the restaurant with all the equipment that goes with it for UV disinfection. So I mean, it put it right up there with almost doing the sewer extension. When it comes down to life cycle, how long it'll last, the power, the maintenance that's required to run these systems, you only get 20 years out of them. And so that, that, we kind of tabled that. From my engineer, from the engineering perspective, it looks like the waste, the, the, the main extension's the best way to go for this property, especially because they have multiple properties now, as Vice Mayor brought up. They all are on the hill and, and their septic's aren't going to last. I mean, they don't have, you know, a couple more years, you know, on a lot of these. So if we can connect all these to the city sewer, it would solve a big problem for everybody on the hill. And, and so I'm in favor of the private development agreement with the shared 62% cost, because I think, I'm working right now with the Crowells to figure out this private development of how much it's going to cost, get a private contractor in here, not bid by the city, but bid privately, so we can kind of see how we can save money and get this thing built cheaper than what the last bid came in as a city bid. cheaper than what the last bid came in as a city bid project.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you for the record, Braden Garrett, 47669 Hazy Lane, Soldatna. I am the operations manager for Whistle Hill. I just stepped into the position on January 1st of this year, but I've been with Whistle Hill since 2018. It's a phenomenal place to work. It's absolutely lovely, family-run business. It's wonderful. This project holds an immense potential for the community and the future of this business. Whistle Hill is proud to employ nearly 50 hardworking individuals who contribute to the local economy. However, we have reached this roadblock in the expansion plans due to the lack of infrastructure development, specifically this sewer extension that we're looking at. The current sewer system, as Mary said, is on the brink of collapse. And the only reason it stays functioning is due to regular daily maintenance by one of our master handymen up there, Dustin Snyder. So the importance of this project cannot be overstated. Without that daily maintenance, it would not function properly and it would fail quicker than we could blink. Reallocating funds for the sewer extension will not only allow us to connect to the sewer system, but also pave way for the business to expand. With this crucial step, we can create lodging options, we can enhance our retail opportunities, provide more avenues for social gatherings in the very near future of Whistle Hill's development. Whistle Hill has become a beacon for the community here and a must-visit destination for tourists, with countless accounts of visitors describing their trip to Whistle Hill as the highlight of their journey from their trip and journey to Alaska. People travel from Anchorage and Homer alone just for a date night or a coffee date at Brew at 602 or Addy Camp, and the demand for that keeps growing. Just last night, I sat a couple in there who had never been in, they were from Palmer, they came down for dinner just because they heard it was wonderful. A couple from Florida came up on their honeymoon and on their flight from Florida to Minneapolis, they were told, hey, you need to stop at a restaurant called Addy Camp, it's a bunch of train cars in Soldatna. Then from their flight from Minneapolis to Seattle, they were told the same thing by someone else. From their Seattle flight to Anchorage, they were told that by someone else. So that's three times from Florida all the way to Anchorage, they were told they have to stop there. It's becoming a beacon here in this community, and I think it's really important that we're able to continue doing business. By reallocating funds for that sewer extension project, we will unlock the full potential of Whistle Hill because this investment will not only benefit all businesses currently up there, but future businesses, as well as uplift the entire community. Whistle Hill envisions a future where it becomes a thriving hub of economic activity, providing jobs, attracting tourists by supporting local businesses of Soldatna. I really do urge you all to consider the long-term benefits of this project. By supporting the reallocation of funds, you're investing in the growth and prosperity of our community. And I think together we can create a bright future for Whistle Hill and ensure that it continues to shine as a gem of Soldatna. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Brian Irwin, 104 Woodlett Court, Kenai, owner of Frames and Things. The 25% thing, I think you have the ability to jump that hurdle by asking the people that want more funds to build something like Whistle Hill. And if they can build something like Whistle Hill and maintain it, then you could have that leeway to give more than 25%. That's a heck of an investment on that hill. I don't know what the appraised value of that hill is now, but I can tell you, before they got there, it probably wasn't more than 20, 30,000, I would assume. That's been quite a project and it's been an enjoyable project for me to be a part of. Your 25%, I understand where you come from. And if somebody wants to invest that much money into something that's already there for six years now, I think you have some leeway to say, yes, we can give more to this project. And then once you get another project to that point where you've invested that much money in Soldatna, then we can look at your more than 25%. And that's really all I have to say. I think that would be the hurdle you could overcome just by the sheer investment they've already put on that hill. That's it.
Any questions from the council? Just one comment that it's 25% up to 100,000.
Up to 100,000, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anything? Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good evening.
Peter Machiki, 300 Fairway Circle, Soldatna, Alaska. I didn't speak earlier because I'm not here as a mayor, here as a neighbor. I live out in the direction of Whistle Hill, and I'll tell you, my vision for this city is growth out to Boundary. And you have one way of that being partially paid for the first quarter mile, and that is this project. So if you're thinking of service to one facility, I'm thinking of what the entrance to our city looks like. Looks like a couple of for-sale signs, a slab that used to be a strip club, and nothing else. There are some quality properties out east of town going to Boundary, and at some point you're going to have to provide that service because you're going to have the same soils with the same challenges on the north side of the road, northeast side of that road. So think about the future and what vision has brought to this city in the last 15 years. It takes investment to bring investment to a community like ours. We have a family. I know them quite well, but I kind of prefer the local family stuff rather than logos. We seem to work toward drawing the logos from somewhere else versus folks that have invested pretty handsomely in an incredible facility that people, I have friends driving down all the time to go to Whistle Hill. It's a gift. It's a really important facility for this community. So what I ask, and I would not support an additional appropriation, is that you consider what you've already appropriated and what you consider what this, not only this facility, but future growth moving east from that facility would bring to this community. You're going to fill up, downtown's getting pretty close. We've invested in storefronts. Improvements, we've invested in other improvements in the city. This place is exploding. It has transformed in the last 15 years. You can continue that transformation with what's possible moving east. Highway frontage, new highway, pretty valuable property, if there's a way to move waste. So that's all I had. I hope you'll consider something. If you think about the delta, they're already, they already have an SAD. The delta doesn't change by moving into a development agreement without additional support, the project's just not going to happen. The family has invested significantly. Part of the property purchases were, Madam Vice Mayor, were looking for other locations that might have quality soils. It doesn't exist. So it's something to consider, but that's what I had. Again, just a regular guy here that lives in that area of town that has a little bit of vision of what can happen out there.
Any council questions? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you, Mr. Machiki, for coming this evening. So if we were to proceed along the path that you are recommending and the next business comes along and wants the same thing, do you think we are setting a precedent and we are going to have to repeat doing this over and over and over again? And then where do we get the money?
No, your policy allows a case-by-case basis consideration. We use the word precedent often in government, and it's just not there. You can set a criteria for how you want to invest in the future. That would be a, you're going to have others come to you. This community is growing rapidly. It's one of only two growing boroughs in the state, and this city's growing faster than any other area in the borough, this area. So you're going to have other opportunities, exciting opportunities, and you'll have to evaluate them on a case-by-case basis. You already appropriated this amount. Again, no one's asking for more investment, but the only potential to bring that price down is through a development agreement. If you want the full amount of the investment to go toward building infrastructure, a development agreement is a way to do that. So my opinion, but you asked, so I don't think it locks you into anything. We've done things when something benefits our community so dramatically that is different than an individual asking for a certain thing. The Walgreens thing was a new thing. We moved forward for that development, brought in a logo from somewhere else, that's good. It's an important asset. Give the same consideration and perhaps at a higher investment for locals where all the dollars stay right here.
Any further questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here in the chamber wishing to speak on this subject? Please state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
I am Nicholas Connor. I live at 735 Cahill, which is just up the road from Whistle Hill. I actually have family that used to own Whistle Hill. This is the first I've heard of it tonight. And I think I'm probably going to speak for probably half of the Soldatna residents when I talk, knowing what I've, just what I've gleaned off of the, what the problem is. It seems like when Walgreens came in here, it was 25% up to 100,000, and that's great. Walgreens is a big company and they were one store. We're talking about a facility that has, and forgive me if I don't know as much information as what I've gleaned off the conversation, four or five businesses, 50 employees, Walgreens probably has 10 or 12. There's also several properties, we're adding six or seven more properties plus the businesses that are already there. So I do agree there shouldn't be special favors that I heard last night to friends. I agree with that, but I think this is a very unique situation where what if each individual property owner, seven people, do they all get 25% up to 100,000? Does each business get 25% up to 100,000? I think I think that you guys are doing the right thing by listening to people talk about this. I think that you guys should consider this and we are all very proud of Whistle Hill. We love to see it in the night, we drive by, the lights up there. Residents here go there all the time, we took our family there, we are very proud of it. I go to Walgreens too, but I don't know if I'm saying I'm proud of it. I mean, it's a, it's a good store. But yeah, I appreciate you guys listening to everybody talk tonight, and that's, that's all I have to say.
Any questions for Mr. Carey? Seeing none, thank you. Anyone else? And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Alyeska Garrett, 47669 Hazy Lane in Soldatna. I was raised here, not born with the name like Alyeska, you'd think, but I was raised here since I was two, went out of state for school thinking I would never come back. And then my mom got empty nest syndrome and started this whole development. And about halfway through college, I was inspired. I have a degree in theater, so I was kind of bound and determined to go to New York or California, places with a little bit more opportunity than up here in Alaska, but I I took a chance and I'm, I thought, you know, if you can't find, if theater's not there, you can bring it there. And with the help of my mom and her development, I was inspired. It's been a long couple of years. I've been up there, I've been working there since they opened on and off from school, and I really don't enjoy cleaning up when our septic system backs up into the basement. I've been called up there midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning to mop up gray water. It's not an enjoyable process, if you can imagine. But the amount of blood, sweat, and a lot of tears from both my parents and myself and my whole family, I urge you to, just like I invested in our community to invest in Whistle Hill, it brings immense joy to see the development thrive and succeed. And it, it can't get any, it can't succeed anymore with where we're at, it's, it's kind of stalled. I have invested in our community. I just purchased my second home with my husband, actually last week, we just moved in. And I would love to see this community continue to thrive and expand and grow so that when I do decide to have a family, I can, I can be proud of it. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this subject? Seeing none, I have a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there, so we will back before the council. Any further council comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really slow on things, so I, I need some assistance here, I think from management. We made a commitment ways back, and now we have a motion to possibly make a commitment with a cap of up to 100,000. Just information, what did we commit to before and what would, where would we be with this?
Previously, previously the council adopted, approved a special assessment district with 62.5% contribution, and that amount is 508,875.
Mr. Carey?
Then just, again, I'm pretty slow, but I want to be sure. Do I understand that we'd be moving that 508,000 dollar commitment down to a cap of 100,000?
That's my understanding of the motion.
So after making an agreement, and many people have worked on this financially and in other ways, we're at, I'd say, I won't say late date, but middle date, we're reducing significantly the commitment that we made. Am I reasoning that correctly? At least from 508 to 100,000.
Correct.
To me is significant reduction. Thank you.
Any further comments? Vice Mayor Parker?
So to Mr. Cornelius, under a special assessment district, it is the city's responsibility to go out for contract, be responsible for the, for the entire project, correct? So we would be putting forth, we approved the special assessment district at 814,000. That 814,000 would come out of the city budget, and once the assessment district is established and people are connected, then through their payments, that is replenished. But initially, the state is, the city is paying 814,000 is what we've committed to at this point.
Vice Mayor Parker, through the mayor, that's correct. Under the SAD process, it's a municipal project, it's a city, city-owned project. Under a development agreement, it would be a private project under the terms and conditions of that agreement.
Just to clarify that, we would upfront, if we stayed with a SAD, pay 814,000, but would be reimbursed through the SAD for 37.5% of that.
That's correct. Through the SAD code, there's, there's prepayment opportunities, there's prime plus two interest rates, but there's a very defined process for the SAD, which is why we have it before you. And as John mentioned, the outstanding resolution regarding that SAD that does need to be addressed at some point.
Any further council comments? Ms. Waxler?
So again, I'm just paddling through here, trying to figure it out. If we go with the development agreement, is it accurate that there's a possibility that the estimate is significantly off because it won't be a city contract? Will it be a lot less?
Thank you for the question. From the city's perspective, we wouldn't really have a dog in the fight regarding the ultimate construction. I mean, it will affect us under the percentage ratio, but the not-to-exceed amount is the max commitment that the council would be agreeing to under that development agreement. So it would place the burden on the developer for all of the provisions in that agreement, which include building to our approved standards, our inspections, coordinating with other benefited properties if they wanted to, you know, go in together in some fashion, financing, as the city manager noted, we would pay a lump sum at the termination of the project upon demonstrating, you know, eligible costs under that development agreement. So to answer your- So to answer your question, if construction costs were to come back differently than expected, we would still be operating under the terms and conditions of that development agreement, which is X percentage not to exceed a certain dollar amount.
Mr. Chilson.
Can I get the number one more time from staff that we'd previously appropriated for this? It's 508,000 something?
508.
508,875.
Something like that.
I'd like to clarify that. And if I misclarify, I would expect to be corrected. We not, that is the, the 508 is the city's portion. The project cost at that time estimated cost was 814,000, and that entire amount has been appropriated. Because through the SAD, the city pays the entire cost of it. And that's why the estimate at this time is 1.1 million. If we were to put it out, excuse me, it came back at 1.1 million. And so we have to appropriate the entire amount.
Got it. I guess I want to know the actual dollar amount that we would be on the hook for at the end when everything is settled. Like, what is our portion from the previous agreement? 508,000 what? 508,875?
Can I, can I point a clarification? That $508,000 is based on the estimate that it was going to cost $814,000 to construct. The bid that came in was 1.1 million, which would require the city to appropriate an additional $284,000. And then after the project is complete, if people are hooked up, then they start to repay at 37 and a half percent of the total project cost. So.
I don't support that. I get that. I just want to know, based on the staff recommendation that we do the development agreement, but cap at the previous 62.5 amount that we would be on the hook for at the previous projection, 508,875 is kind of what we were originally considering if we went with the staff recommendation. So I want to circle back to the discussion we had about the outflow costs and other, other upcoming costs that we have that would be borne by the utility fund. Kyle, can you reiterate the projected costs for that project? And any other projects that you can foresee that would be significant on that utility fund?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilson, through the mayor. The Outfall Rehabilitation Project, which is slated for construction ASAP, but the month of April before the river comes up, is expected to cost about 850,000, 900,000, all of which funds have been appropriated and are ready for expenditure. The ongoing biosolids de-watering project, that's replacing our antiquated belt press in the wastewater treatment plant. We have received several grants towards that. We have one state revolving fund loan, and we're in the process of getting a supplementary SRF loan to complete the funding package. If and when that comes through, we anticipate doing that work this calendar year as soon as possible. And again, it's slated for about three to four million.
Got it. So we're looking at three to four million on that, plus 850,000 on the outflow.
And I don't have our five-year CIP utility fund in front of me, but those are the two bigger.
They're the major ones.
Immediate projects that are ongoing right now.
Okay. And my last question for staffs, I think this was mentioned earlier, but I didn't get a chance to judge on this. What's the current balance of that utility fund? Approximate?
Approximately 2.1 million.
Okay. So we are well under where we need to be for that. I have a number of thoughts on this, as I've kind of mentioned. I, you know, I've spoken to the need to support our small businesses and and doing what we can to support development that will help them grow and in turn be the economic engine that our city all benefits from. I struggle with this because we, the reality is, you know, as much as we have an obligation to, to follow through with the commitment that we had, we don't have the money that we need to, to support all these projects we have coming on the roadmap. So I, you know, looking at this, I'm trying to figure out some way that we can come forward with a compromise on that. And I'm, I'm going to do the same thing I did last time we were debating this, when we had one number on the low end and another number on the high end, just for the sake of getting this moving. I'm going to make a motion here in a moment to amend the cap on this from $100,000 to $304,437.50, which is splitting the difference between the 100,000 amount and the 508,875 recommended by staff. That puts us right in the middle. And I think that is a good compromise in the sense that we're still doing something more than that minimum $100,000 amount to support this business. But there's also the concession that the city doesn't have unlimited funds. We, we have some significant expenses coming up, and my concern would be significantly increasing the rates that our local residents pay. So I would be supportive of that motion, which I'm going to make here in a minute, with the additional string that we cannot keep doing this debate every single time we have an SAD or a development agreement come forward. So what I would really like to see, and I'd be willing to partner with any council member here on this, is we should probably consider an ordinance and just codify a 25% amount. So this is not a debate that we are doing every single time we have this come forward. So let's, let's see if we can make this compromise. I'm going to make the motion here in a minute. And with the understanding that if we do this motion, this is one and done, and we have got to codify this and just get done with this at some point in the future.
Why don't you make your motion?
Thank you. So at that end, I would move to amend the current motion on the floor to modify the cap from $100,000 to $304,437.50, which would be splitting the difference between the staff recommended amount and the current $100,000 amount.
Is there a second? Is there a second, Mr. Carey?
I'll second that.
Ms. Hutchings.
We're up for discussion now. The only other question I have, and it's over the whole SAD, is the owners have changed. So what does that do to that agreement?
Go ahead.
I'm going to turn to Mr. Zarneski, who has spoken with the attorney, and he has also been involved in the memo for that explanation.
So with the existing SAD, as mentioned, because of the cost estimate overrun, we are required to come back to, to counsel with the resolution requesting additional funds. At that point, all of the SAD members will be notified and will be provided the opportunity to comment. If you decide to do a development agreement, as being talked about right now, what would happen is we would bring that resolution forward that would ask for more money for the SAD. We would ask that you fail that resolution. That would then open up the door for you to do the development agreement or some other alternative. So regardless of the whatever options you choose, at some point, you'll have to make a decision on funding the increase for this existing SAD. And the property owners at that point would have an opportunity to comment and would be notified. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
So if I could follow up. So if this project costs 1.1 million, according to Jordan, we pay what?
508,875 is the current cap recommended by.
So the lowered amount is what?
100,000 is what was originally proposed in the initial motion.
Right. But and then you.
My motion was to compromise and split the difference between the 100,000 that was moved by Vice Mayor Parker and the 508,000 that we are going to do by recommended by staff. And what I motioned for was 304,437.50.
If it comes in at 1.1 and we contribute 340 or thereabouts, then the crowls are going to have to pay the difference, but we're going to pay it upfront. Is that correct?
Go ahead. Only if it stays in the SAD.
Right. If it stays in the SAD, yes. However, if it, his motion is speaking to a development agreement. So the development agreement, the maximum, if this passes, would be 304,000, and the crowls pay the, the rest of it.
So we would not be responsible for any of it? Just the 340? And we're done?
Yes.
If I may add one more comment. Again, I am only supportive of this with the understanding that we need to pursue an ordinance to codify a 25% cap. So we cannot keep doing these debates. We really need to set a threshold that we standardize on with future development agreements. This is a one and done exception because we had a previous understanding with them that we are going to provide above average assistance. And I think this is a compromise to recognize that since that agreement was made, we are under increased financial strain with these upcoming projects. And this is kind of meeting them in the middle. We'll make this one-time exception to meet them there. And then we really need to, as a council, avoid this in the future and codify some percentage amount and just set it in code.
Any further debate? The motion now is that as amended, is to go into a development agreement with a max portion of the city being 304,000 and some change. Mr. Carey.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the what's before us is an amendment to go.
That's correct.
Not the motion.
Yeah, amended motion.
Thank you.
Anything else? Call for the vote on the amendment.
Chilson.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Whackler.
Yes.
No.
Parker.
No.
We have three yes, two no.
So the motion to amend failed on a three-two vote. The original motion is back before you. Any further debate on that? The original motion is Max, or Mr. Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. The city of Saldana is very supportive of the businesses that do business here in the community. We have the local, the storefront improvement programs. We have worked very closely with the Whistle Hill developers over the years. As they sought to develop this project, we didn't ask them to develop it. They wanted to develop it. They wanted to move forward with it. We have worked with them so that they could continue to fulfill their dream. But it, I don't see it incumbent upon us to pick up the price tag associated with moving this forward. If we do it for this project, and we've had others come and say, you need to lower your water rates for here because it's excessive. Where, where do we stop? Where do we stop? And I have had the conversation about a potential ordinance. But I do believe that the city of Saldana is very, very supportive of our local businesses, our local students, and moving this community forward. And would urge you to support this motion.
Any further comment? Mr. Chilson.
Couple of thoughts on this. I've spoken this, spoken to this a lot tonight. I want to support the business on this, but I think the reality is we just don't have the money in the utility fund to support the original intended amount as currently being recommended by staff with these upcoming projects without significantly risking large rate increases to our local residents. I, I'm just not supportive of the full 508,000 amount. I was really hoping that we could find some compromise and and do the one time with the 304,000 something. I'm sorry, that failed. I wish we could be supporting you with that tonight. So I am going to be supporting this tonight because I want to get something through. I wish it was more, but this is what we have before us. And regardless of, of the outcome of this motion that we have before us, I do think there is still value that we explore some codification of a standard so we don't have this debate. And Vice Mayor Parker or any other council member that'd be interested in working with me on this, I think it's something that we should continue to explore. So, thank you.
Mr. Carey.
I appreciate all the comment being made, and it alarms me very much talking about large rate increases if we do certain things. And that we had a work session before this meeting. City of Saldana has 21,149,691 invested. We have $21 million that we have set aside over the years. Very good policy, very good fiduciary responsibility, that we now use just to draw the interest on to add to our budget. And so it alarms me if anyone would leave here thinking, oh, my goodness, the city of Solana is in trouble. We've got a $21 million fund that can be invested wherever we'd wish to. And we can make that motion at any time. We're not like, we have to wait a year. Again, as was mentioned by the person that was speaking to us about our investments this afternoon, and so that we could technically make a motion right now to move from those funds, millions, to the city. So I just don't want to leave here that the city isn't in good shape. We are in excellent shape. We're one of the very best cities in the entire state of Alaska because of the good fiduciary responsibility. People came here honestly, in good faith, and I think we responded in good faith. They said, we want to do this. They have a wonderful vision. They've done a lot of work. We understood it was going to cost us money. We weren't taken by surprise at all, the money, the figures were mentioned, and we made an agreement. I don't think we're facing a bankruptcy. I don't think we're facing any financial crisis. As much as possible, it seems to me that there's an attitude that government doesn't keep its word. I think when you make an agreement and you don't keep your word, it's not surprising then. People would say that maybe government doesn't want to keep their word. I will not support this because I think it is not keeping our word. Thank you.
Anything else?
Sorry, I just have to speak to the, the comment about our investment funds. We can't use that money. That money is not used to support wastewater infrastructure. Any, any capital improvement that we do has to be paid out of the utility fund, which is solely paid for by the ratepayers. So any, it's just the way that those funds are separated. It's unfortunate the way this is right now, so.
The motion in front of you right now is to go into a development agreement for Whistle Hill with a maximum contribution of the city of either 25% capped at a $100,000 total. No more than 100,000. That everybody's understanding? Call for the vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings? Chilson?
Yes.
Carey?
No.
Whackler?
Yes.
Cassidy?
No.
You have four yes, one no.
Motion passed on a four-one vote. Now, before we go any further, this will have to come back to the council as a resolution. And then the original SAD has to come back to us for up or down vote. And that will be at the next meeting. Okay. All right. Moving on to the next agenda item, number seven, public hearings. Testimony limited to three minutes per speaker. Ordinance 2024-005, accepting grant funds from the Rasmussen Foundation, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $450,000 in the Saldana Regional Sports Complex Capital Project Fund to support construction of the Saldana Field House, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Ms. Hutchings.
I'll make a motion to enact ordinance 2024-005.
May I have a second, please? Vice Mayor Parker. Thank you. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the title stated, we received a grant for an amount of 450,000 from the Rasmussen Foundation. And I'd like to note that it is an outright grant with no match required. And it will be used to for the FF and E, as Kyle likes to say, that will help with the sport court, the turf field, and the track. Any type of health-related activity.
Okay. Next, we'll go into a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. Happy users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance 2024-005? Seeing none, now take a look at Zoom, and there are no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, this item is back before the council. Any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Whackler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings? Hutchings?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have five, six yes, excuse me, five yes votes.
Ordinance 2024-005 passes on a five-zero vote with one absent. Moving on to the next agenda items. Oh, number nine, mayor council reports. Mayor's report, National League of Cities Congressional City Conference is March 9th through the 13th of 2024 in Washington DC. Attending will be myself, Vice Mayor Parker and City Manager Bauer. We, there is a southeast or south central mayor's energy coalition formed with the, the mayors here on the borough and the Anchorage mayor, mayor of Palmer, Basila, and the Matsu Borough to discuss energy issues, specifically gas and coke inlet and being able to run the electric lights mainly. We met again today. They're forming a technologic, technology committee of roughly 15 to 20 members who will be reporting to that. And there'd be more information coming out in the near future. Tomorrow, there's a food security function taking place at the Goodness Restaurant Coffee Shop there, the old steakhouse that we used to be there. Next item, council reports on boards and commissions. There are none, and I'll back up just a second. The, the last issue of Whistle Hill is, is kind of complicated. It's been an issue that's been before this council now for well over a year. I think we all see both sides of the issue. I guess what concerns me a little bit is the same council here less than a year ago, committed to 62% funding for that project and have now reversed that decision a few, few months later. I'm not sure how long ago that was now. We probably could have done that when this originally came before the council months ago, instead of going through this long drawn out process and maybe getting a lot of hopes up high for people and, and now to change all that. So I have some, some concerns about that. So moving on to the next agenda item is report from city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item that I wanted to report on that you're well aware of is the continuing resolution at the federal level. And there should be a vote on the resolution that contains the funding for the field house on Friday. It's scheduled for Friday. Of course, keeping an eye on it and we'll report if there is a vote. As you know, most votes have failed and have been kicked down. They've been extended out and so continuing to watch it.
Is that going to be just another continuing resolution? Which means it really hasn't passed. It's just still sitting out there? Or is it the actual budget where that money is in?
It is another continuing resolution.
So we're still don't have.
Still continuing to watch.
And seeing that I forgot to mention about the AML, I'll let you mention that.
Okay, thank you. I attended AML along with Councilmember Chilson, mayor and vice mayor last week. And what I will do for the next meeting is actually put together a written report. But there was quite a bit of time and conversation regarding, well, BSA funding, which was included in HB 140. And as you have heard, the governor is, has not vetoed it, but has concerns and has given a deadline for those concerns to be addressed. And if they are not addressed, it does sound like he will veto that, that action. Also talked about and, and affects us as well as other municipalities is defined benefits versus defined contribution. There is movement on both sides, a House and Senate regarding SB 88, which returns to defined benefits. Now, there's a whole bunch of parameters about it and a lot of details. But that bill does continue to move. There was another bill, HB 200, and that bill has stalled out and it does not look like it's moving forward. DOT conversations continue as well regarding the STIP. And we were scheduled to meet with DOT, but because they really have a pressing issue to finish that up, we did not meet with DOT. And we'll follow up with them at a later date. They have, I believe it's till Friday to submit the updated information regarding the STIP. And then we'll wait from there to see what the feds do with that information.
And just to add to that, there's quite a few Department of Transportation projects that could lose out on funding if that report or that action isn't taken by, I think, Friday. So it's, it's pretty critical. Now, next item on the agenda is public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jennifer Eamon and my address is 36404 Meek Street in Saldana. And with me is my son Butch Eamon. He's a hockey player. This is his first year with the Ice Hawks. And so we moved to this area from Palmer and discovered that they didn't have ice year round and that a lot of the rinks, you know, are weather dependent. So they, everybody melts their ice here real quick. And so we just are trying to find a way to get involved and see if ice can stay on longer. And then there was an effort to get it put on in July so the kids can practice before their seasons start. And so I hope to get more involved and find out what can be done in, in this effort. We've started skating as a family for moral support, even though he's much better than me now. Just for exercise and just a great activity in the community. It's really a hub. The hockey families have been amazing. It's been a great way for us to plug in and become involved in the community. And so it would be great to see if these programs could flourish and there could be more stick and puck time or just time for the kids to practice or maybe even some roller skating opportunity in the summer if, if nothing can be done over that time. Because we're looking at traveling to the valley, you know, for ice. And really the, even the people in Homer, Nikiski, there's so many people who would benefit from just the one ice rink here, you know, staying, having ice on or even just if we could try for July. So I'll stay involved and kind of work with his organization to see what can be done. But we just wanted to come and say hi and, and address you all. And thank you for the opportunity and, and hope that we can get some more ice time year round. So, thank you.
We're, we're looking at it and working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
My son started at about that age as a goalie. And he played goalie up until his 40s. But when he was that size, if he fell down on the ice with all of his goalie gear on, somebody had to run out and pick him up and put him back on his skates.
Yep, that's what happened tonight. We came straight from practice. That happened a couple of times.
Mayor Whitney?
Yes, go ahead.
So I wanted to say thank you for, for coming and thank you for staying and, and listening. And maybe you got a little nap in. So this will, we have the Parks and Rec Board that will be meeting on March 7th at 5:30.
Okay.
That you might want, they're going to be talking about the hockey rink at that time as well, so.
Oh, great.
And just wanted to fill you in.
Okay, and here, is that where they meet? Okay, all right.
Thanks, young man.
Can you say thank you?
Go.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else here in the audience wishing to make any public comments? Seeing none, I am looking at Zoom and we have no hands raised on Zoom. Next item, council comments. Ms. Whackler?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of stuff today. I'd just like to say, I, I know that there's a lot of stuff with the Sports Center going on. I love the idea of it going back to Parks and Rec and then just digging in and finding out if there's any solution to this that we can do. I know staffing, when Joel was talking about that, it was not about literal a staff person to be there. It's about the really incredibly difficult job it is to put a floor on top of ice and to take that back off again and how that's just really physically onerous and difficult to do. Like we can't do that on an hourly basis. It's not something that's possible. There, I keep telling everyone who comments on it that like, just give us a year. Just give us a year and the possibilities will be opened up for so much of this. But at the same time, we know that we'll probably be replacing our ice system and we'll be having to allocate some more funds for that big investment too, as well as just finishing building a new field house. So there's a lot going on. And with all that and other repairs that we're doing, I, the Whistle Hill project, I was not here when that was initially discussed and approved. I definitely don't like the idea about going back on something that, that was promised. But I definitely think about the greater good and the citizens and what we're making decisions for and putting that much money in a project that, that on its face supports a small number of constituents is really difficult to do. So I kind of understand the discussion when it comes to, are we going to fund these projects to a point where we are going to have to have everyone do essentially a regressive tax where everyone's going to have to pay for one business is thriving or not? So it's, it's a really hard decision to make. And I thank you all for helping me through the discussion of it today. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Cassidy?
You know, I, like Ms. Whackler, haven't been here long enough to, to have enough experience with all of the decisions that have, that have been made by this council in the past. But for me, especially as a student, my perspective is, is different than, you know, probably about 98% of the people in this room because you have all lived quite, you know, many more years than I have and you have a lot more life experience with I do in, in dealing with these things. But I do want to say that this, this is something that will, will set an example for, for other cities and other towns. As you know, all of you are aware. My family is similar to the, the Curls was their name. My father's an entrepreneur. He's owned several businesses inside and outside of town. And an issue like this that they have where their sewage system is, is causing them to, you know, I mean physically having to be up until midnight or one, simply cleaning out a basement. My dad, as a plumber currently, like I said, he's an entrepreneur, but he does that kind of stuff routinely and it's not good for them. So I think that, I didn't, I didn't catch her name, but the, the young lady who came in with the Curls, I think it was the daughter, Alyeska? Yeah, that's right. Her, her tears that she shed when she was in here, I think, added on to the, the importance of, of what this meant to them. And, you know, maybe, oh, it's only 50 people or, or, oh, you know, we as the council have the ability. Or I guess you guys as the council have the ability, have the ability to say, oh, you know, we can only pay this much or, or, or we can commit to this. But I think there is something to be said about, about making an informed decision and sticking with it. And I don't mean to preach to the choir. I don't mean to say, you know, any decision that was made here tonight was wrong. Or I don't mean to say that, you know, I know better than anyone or, or, you know, anything like that. But I think it is important to, to think that this situation that those people are in, that kind of dictates where their livelihood goes. Those extra hours of sleep or those, you know, those extra overtime, hundreds of thousands of dollars could really change whether or not we have more people coming into the city or more, you know, more opportunities for students or adults, you know, regardless. I know with places like that, especially the coffee shops, so many students here are employed by places like that. And with Eddie Camp, I know a bunch of my, my friends go there routinely. Some of them work there. And this is only, you know, one example of, of a few businesses. But I think that this, this scenario is, is important for, not only for those people, but for the community. And you all are aware of this. I think I'm just restating what has been said, but those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchings?
I know that a lot of people are disappointed this evening, but I think we also have to think of every business in this town. And I also think that the price increases were a detriment. The fact that the owners in the special assessment district changed. There was just too much time that elapsed and I just feel that it needed to be looked at again. And again, we would be subsidizing a private business, which is, you would have every business in town coming and knocking on your door saying, you know, we want to do this, but we don't have the funds. So is the city going to assist in some, some fashion? So it's sad, but it's a reality. We don't have money to give to every business in this town and still maintain the services that we're maintaining. So I'm sorry about that. And the only other thing I have to say is I hope the wind quits soon.
Mr. Carey? Microphone?
Thank you. I think we've had an excellent time in terms of our discussion. I was very pleased with our work session this afternoon again, and it's a normal part of our process to look at those funds that we have, look at how they're doing, whether we want the funds, how much we want to invest in the long term and the middle term, and then how much needs to be much more liquid to be used more frequently. I am very proud of the city as I made the decisions of fiduciary responsibilities to have that amount of money invested. And so again, I think that's a good thing. I think it's always appropriate to talk about how much, what number we want to aim at and what's the best use of funds. So again, I was pleased with that. The issue of the ice time, I think we all know our, our history that the Sports Center, at least in my opinion, was built for hockey. It was, that was a community that came out overwhelmingly, again, decades ago, saying we need that Sports Center and that's why we built that awesome Sports Center and the hockey rink. I hope we can do, excuse me, I look forward to seeing that we will do as much as we can. I have no doubt we'll do all that we can. And so again, I, I hope that we can, as much as possible, meet the needs that those communities have. I'm biased very much and I don't mind. Activities, athletics very much keep our young people positively involved. They build our community, they build personality. I think they're critically important and so whatever we can do to help. And I understand that we might, that may not directly be school related, but again, hockey is a major part. And so again, wherever we can help those, and I know this community is overwhelmingly in support of the, the parents, grandparents, the kids that participate. That young man here at the end, that was an awesome way to end our meeting. I've got, I'm just so many levels. And so again, I, I know that we'll do all we can and I hope that we can particularly help them. The discussion tonight, again, I don't have any difficulty with the idea of codifying procedures. But we codify so that we do have a format to use, but we can always make changes. We can always amend it. But again, I think it could be very helpful in terms of discussion and people having an idea. And so I would certainly support the idea of codifying. What I do know very much is that our discussion we had on all the issues tonight were good faith discussions. Unquestionably, I don't believe anyone, my knowledge, held back what they really want. Unquestionably. I don't believe anyone, my knowledge, held back what they really wanted to say. I think they all said, I, I, I like to think at least once in a while I have some restraint. I don't say all the things I want to say. But I don't think there was anything anyone wasn't allowed to say or felt they shouldn't. Um, I, again, um, I was very pleased, Mr. Mayor, that you made the decision that since this was a motion, again, you would allow the people that came here to speak about. I think that really added also. And that's really what I want to uh, close with. You know, on the news last couple of weeks, uh, last week plus, uh, the individual in Russia who dissented, who had opinions other than what the majority was. You know, he, after they tried to poison him and he, he survived and he came back to the country and they put him in jail and looks like they were maybe gonna do a swap, uh, they murdered him. And so that um, it is great to be an American. It is great to be able to come to meetings like this and to openly discuss things. And to have no doubt, I don't think anyone's gonna hit me or they're not gonna run me over with their car in the parking lot. I'll watch, uh, again. And I say that because I don't mind being the one on a four-one. I don't at all. I, I don't think it, I, I think it's, it's a strength of our system and that's why we elect people. We don't have just a computer running things, uh, because it's valid. I'm open that one or two of the other people may have at least leaned a little bit. Uh, not, they weren't solidly all one way, but again, I just think it's great civic participation. I wish more people came to our meetings and they saw, and it absolutely energizes me, uh, when I know that there's an issue that I'm going to probably be on the losing side of, but I sure enjoy the fact that I get to come here and discuss it. And I know that it's done in goodwill and uh, and I would hope I'd never say anything that would make staff think badly of me or saying things. No, that means not like me per se, but, but again, not uh, from a standpoint of comments. So again, I think tonight was a really good meeting and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. Um, I said a lot already. I would say to my neighbor here. Um, sometimes we agree and sometimes we disagree. And in the end, we will still be friends and
Oh, I'll.
and, and civil with each other. So um, and that is the part of the system that, that I enjoy, that we, we can't have the discussions and we, we can find that we don't always agree and, and that's okay. Um, but in the end, my neighbor next door here will always be my friend.
The system works the way it's supposed to work. Mr. Chilson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to thank and commend Student Councilman Cassidy for his comments tonight. Um, very articulate in the way you speak. And I have to say that of the student representatives I've observed with my time here with council, you're, you're definitely one of the more well-composed ones. I love hearing you get engaged in some of the topics that we're doing. As much as I love hearing about Sohigh, it's, it's great seeing our younger generations have a, take a stake in and what we address as a council. As Vice Mayor Parker had mentioned, um, some meetings are easier than others. It's, you know, if, if money wasn't issue and we had all the resources in the world, I, I don't think any of us on this body would disagree with doing everything we possibly can to support our community. But the reality is, as uh, Councilwoman uh, Whackler and Councilman Hutchins mentioned, we, we have an obligation to look after the greater good of the city as a whole. And that sometimes means we have to make really tough decisions that are unpopular at times. And I am very grateful that we can have that respectful dialogue and, and work through these tough decisions and hopefully uh, come out on the other end, having found a compromise whenever possible. Um, so I, I am appreciative of, of the discussion we had tonight. I think it was very productive, although um, it is always sad sometimes to see the outcome of these. Sometimes those decisions just have to be made. Um, so I thank the council for that. Um, additionally, uh, it was great to see the presentation today from APCM, um, and where we are as a city. Um, I'd like to speak to the trust fund that we have and the scholarships that that funds. I think that's exceptional that we have a, a variety of means to support academic uh, continuation for our kids and, and through those scholarships. So that's very, very good to see. I'm just very grateful for that. And lastly, uh, I didn't get to speak on this night because it was on the consent agenda, but I wanted to briefly speak to the I Voted sticker contest. Um, very excited to see this coming forward. Um, uh, it was, it was an idea I put together sometime back and approached staff uh, with and I was like, hey, here's a curveball. Let's do this. This, this might be cool. And um, I was very uh, grateful that they were receptive to that and able to hit the ground running. And I just had the idea, I have to say, staff did all the legwork on that. So thank you to our incredible staff for putting the pieces together in this and uh, as they run forward and, and finalizing the policies on that. Um, we've, not only we, but uh, it, it's a common thing to see low voter turnout in municipal elections. We've struggled with that um, for years and I, I think we've seen some gradual improvement at times, but um, whatever we can do to get people excited and engaged in the local uh, election process and if we can through, through any means in doing so, highlight local uh, artists and all the amazing talent we have in our community and just showcase Soldatina as a community through this. I'm very excited for that. I know one of the things that we're talking about with this, because again, this, this program is still to be finalized. There's a lot up in the air with it. Is uh, coming up with a means to uh, have uh, student participation at our schools. Maybe we have uh, an elementary category or a secondary category and then a at-large adult artist category. Um, I, I've reached out and spoken to a couple of school principals in the area and they're very excited about this as an opportunity to get kids in their uh, art classes involved in this. So I'm, I'm just very grateful to see this coming. I'm excited. I, I, I really love the art stickers that the state did with their elections for some years back. And if we can recreate that and do it in a way that showcases Soldatina, this is just gonna be very exciting. So thanks, everyone, all for this.
I need to mention that I learned something about Mr. Chilson this, over the weekend or over the last week that um, I didn't remember about. Uh, he was a member of the Young Marine Program at the Elks, uh, many, many, many years ago.
It's been some time.
Um, I think we trained him correctly. Uh, they turned out to be a pretty good guy.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Next on the agenda is no reason for an executive session. And uh, March sixth, twenty twenty-four, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, five thirty PM. March seventh, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, five thirty PM. The March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four council meeting has been canceled. March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four Airport Commission meeting, five thirty PM. March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting at six PM. And I will be gone from March nineteenth to April second. And Vice Mayor Parker will be chairing that uh, March twenty-seventh meeting. And seeing nothing further on our agenda, we are adjourned.